Members all up. One of our members is sick, but she's in on Zoom, if you will. We're gonna turn the TV. All right. Um. So.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor 240, East Long Metal Road.
Sure. Thank you very much. Good evening. Tom Reedy, Attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst here on behalf of Strata Clean Energy. Nice to see a couple of you again. Nice to meet others for the first time. I've got Jason Hathcock and Derek Hasick, both from Strata here on the phone. And I think what we'll have you do is just, Derek, I'll have you kind of give an overview of Strata, and then we can talk a little bit about permitting path. And so Derek, what I've done is I just gave them the new updated PowerPoint, the new deck, which does not have an address on it. I think, as Derek will talk about, we want to talk more generally about the use, because we don't know that it will be at that site. And so it's really about battery energy storage systems generally, and then we can maybe back into, you know, what Strata is thinking. And hopefully come back in a subsequent meeting to talk a little bit more about the details. So without more, I'll turn it over to you, Derek.
Yeah, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
As I choke on the pretzel, I was just trying to eat there. Pleasure to meet everybody virtually here, and I wanted to start off by sharing a little bit of an update. Normally, we would have otherwise been here, but one of our colleagues recently left. And so from a timing issue, we weren't able to coordinate our schedules in order to be up there this time. But, you know, as Tom had suggested, thought this would be a little bit more of an introduction of who we are as a company. And generally give you a little bit of a preview of what energy storage looks like. Because I know solar has been around the state of Massachusetts for many years. This is a relatively new technology. And so the thought was, as Tom suggested, that we would get a little bit of feedback on, you know, any, you know, kind of rule interpretation and whatnot as it relates to the permitting process. And then look to next month to come back after you folks have maybe had a chance to look at our deck and consider any questions that you might have about the technology and bring back a little bit more of a deeper dive into into what it is, how it operates, and what it, you know, what it might be able to do for, from a technological perspective, right? And so just wanted to offer that context, because normally we would be up there and shaking your hands or pounding fists, whatever the standard is in Massachusetts these days. But as far as, as far as who I am, my name's Derek Hasick, and I am the VP of Development for the eastern portion of the US for Strata Clean Energy, which is, Strata Clean Energy has been in business for 14 years now. It's a privately held, family owned business that's headquartered in Durham, North Carolina. We've been, you know, developing solar resources for over, I guess, 14 years at this point. And over the past three or four years have pivoted over into the energy storage space as it's become a bit more of a a technology that is used by the grid to kind of support the addition of renewable energy throughout throughout the wholesale and distributed markets. As far as kind of, you know, what we've done, we've got over 250 solar and storage projects that are, we've developed and are operational to date. And we've invested over that course of time, over three and a half billion dollars in these projects and communities. You know, admittedly initially focused heavily on North Carolina, but also in, we have a very large footprint in Virginia. We've developed projects in New York City. We've developed storage assets all over California and Arizona as well. And, you know, one of the things that is very, I guess, a differentiator of Strata Clean Energy is that we are a kind of what we call a cradle of the grave, a vertically integrated, whatever terminology you want to use, developer. So we not only go out and have a guy like myself or Jason, you know, look at developing the projects, talking to landowners, talking with you all, getting the permits. But we also have an engineering procurement and construction arm of our business. So we will be the ones who actually build the technology solution. And then the goal of our efforts are to then be the long-term owner and operator of these assets. Not unlike some of the solar developers you may have heard of in the past, some of them have what's called kind of an IPP, an independent power producer holding company where they'll drop these assets in. And basically, they, you know, it's a tax structure that's used to allow ownership and realize kind of the investment tax credit that the federal government offers. And basically, they become the long-term owner and operator of these assets. It's, it's very rare, frankly, to have a group that does all of those, kind of the greater the grave approach. And I think it's something that, you know, as, as you're looking for partners to work with or consider working with in your, in your area, the idea is, is you got one throat, one throat to choke, not to use the weird saying, but, you know, generally, you got one, you got one person that you can, you can go to and raise issues with when and if they come up. But as far as, you know, as far as the technology itself, one of the things I wanted to put in this presentation, actually, is just a couple of examples of how, you know, what these projects kind of look like. We've got a couple renderings on slide three of, you know, what a 20 megawatt facility looks like. And then if you go down to slide four, this is, this is a project that we actually built for Southern California Edison out in California, just to give you an idea of, you know, the amount of energy density that you can, you can fit into a relatively small area for these types of projects, which is, you know, materially different than a large utility scale solar project. And accordingly, you know, you're able to kind of tuck them into certain areas in a fairly reasonable manner to minimize some of the visual impact, which I know is, especially in my experience in Massachusetts, you know, a factor, given the land constraints and topography constraints that exist out there. And then just going down to slide five, you know, it gives you a little, a little bit of example of what one of these battery enclosures look like and kind of open the door. You can see a little bit about, you know, what the cells is what they called actually look like. It's basically kind of a whole bunch of server racks that are tucked in there with a bunch of HVAC equipment to, you know, help monitor the temperature of the, of the system as they operate. And as you go down to slide number six, you can kind of see a few examples of what are branded, you know, solar installation boxes look like. And again, if you, you look kind of on that bottom picture, it's just some, you know, a whole bunch of battery cells stacked on top of each other. I mean, it's cliche to say, but they actually do look like, you know, like a, like a computer server. And, you know, again, the idea is, is just wanted to give you a sense of what, what these things look like and start, you know, I guess, just start the, start the concept of having a few thoughts and questions that you might have. And, and something that we can, you know, kind of discuss over the next couple of weeks, if there's any particular issues or questions you guys have that you can bring back to us and we can ensure that the right experts are available to come and get, get deeper into this stuff, because I know it's, again, we just wanted to kind of have more of an introductory discussion around, around how these might be viewed from the kind of local permitting laws perspective. As far as kind of some of the benefits to the community, you know, there are, not unlike, you know, other projects out there, there's, there's potential for significant contribution to local and state tax budgets through property taxes. You know, similar, not to go back to solar, but it's a similar concept, right? As, as it relates to some of the values that can come off of these projects. You know, it does, as I mentioned before, this technology, one of the reasons Massachusetts imposed kind of an incentive program around storage is to enable the integration of additional renewables throughout the grid in Massachusetts and reducing the overall energy cost by not requiring, you know, significant transmission upgrades in order to accommodate additional solar to meet the state goals. It's kind of, they're used oftentimes by the grid to, I guess, right-size the transmission upgrades that, you know, are required as we go through life, but also can be triggered by different projects. So it helps to kind of smooth that cost curve out. And then, you know, as always, they create high-paying jobs during construction phases of these projects. One of the things, you know, if there are any folks on here who have had some experience with storage, one of the main things is safety, not just with, as it relates to, you know, the construction, but, you know, the ongoing operation of these, of these systems. You know, we have, we have a knock room that we call it where we're monitoring all of our 250 project assets on a, you know, on a moment-by-moment basis at our headquarters in Durham and have the availability of managing any risks as they arise from remotely from those, from that, from that operating room. But also, you know, part of it is, is ensuring that we have local support to ensure that if anything were to happen with the system, there's a safety plan in place and everybody's aware of what needs to happen. We do a lot of local outreach and partnering with the fire department to ensure they understand, you know, how to, how to manage these systems once they're installed. And, you know, we have some security cameras on sites and screening and, you know, fencing and all of that around those as well. But the, you know, the lighting is motion activated, so it's not like it's going to be some big lit-up system drowning out some of the neighbors. I guess, stargazing is a way of thinking about it. And then just as far as, you know, kind of a commitment to safety, it's one of the cornerstones of our business, especially having that kind of construction and operation and maintenance arm of, within our organization. We take it extremely seriously. And one of the reasons, you know, it's, it's one of the reasons that we've developed a relationship with Dominion Energy in Virginia as one of their preferred partners for constructing and operating these assets throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. So all that's to say, like I mentioned, just wanted to put, in an effort to put a face behind the voice and the company, even though it looks like I'm just on a screen, or maybe the folks in the room can't even see me. But, you know, again, sorry I wasn't able to be there in person, but, you know, look forward to, look forward to meeting everybody next month and, you know, initially happy to take any questions you might have, or, you know, be happy to pass it over to Tom to kind of talk a little bit more about the kind of local permitting rules, if that's appropriate.
We're gonna ask a couple of questions, okay?
Yeah, I'll do my best.
You, you mentioned risks and the, in monitoring of potential development of risk, what risks are we talking about? I don't know.
Or. I'm sorry, is there a follow-up question?
What, what risks are we talking about?
Oh, yeah, um, you know, I mean, this is, you know, it's electrical infrastructure equipment, right? So, you know, there is, we will be interconnecting into, you know, a high voltage substation locations. And, and, you know, there's, so that, that sort of concept, there needs to be safety around any sort of electrical infrastructure you're talking about there. And then additionally, and this is something that, you know, I think will be, I would, is something that is, is a factor with these batteries, is a concept called thermal runway, where they can, under very limited and kind of unique circumstances, they can catch on fire. And that's part of the training as it relates to the, the, the fire, the local fire department. And, you know, that, I know, as you hear that, it might sound like a scary concept. But again, it's, it's, it's electrical equipment. And as you go and look out in the marketplace, or like, look at, you know, articles, it's something that, you know, there has been instances in the past, in the past, that, that that has happened. But as part of, you know, our follow-up for this presentation, we have some folks on staff who weren't available to make this call tonight that can come and present information about how we've worked with fire departments in the past, how we design these systems to minimize that risk. And including, you know, material setbacks and spacing between the equipment so that the, if an incident like that occurs, it's, it's, it's basically isolated to that particular, that particular unit that's in the, it's in the overall layout, if that makes sense.
And just one more question, this may be very naive, but why are you interested in handed?
Um, well, first of all, I've been in the area before and it's lovely. But barring all of that, you know, there is a program through the state of Massachusetts called the Clean Energy Standard. And they have, they've, they've developed a program that, not unlike they've done in the past with, with solar projects through the renewable energy credit program, they have developed an incentive program as a way of ensuring that, that, you know, Massachusetts can hit its renewable energy goals without triggering massive upgrades on the transmission system to try and get more storage built on the grid. And we went through and did a, an analysis of the, the, the regional transmission operator, which is called ISO New England. They basically look at the flow of power at the wholesale lever. So you've got distribution poles that you see outside of your house, or maybe some of the, you know, the poles that have like three wires on top of them as you're driving down the road, the smaller poles. That is kind of the groups like Eversource, you know, they operate that national grid. But the RTO, this ISO New England group moves power at the wholesale lever. So those are the really big power lines you see up there. And we tried to figure out a place where we could try to plug our system into the grid that wouldn't trigger those massive upgrades. And one of, one of a couple areas that we were looking at happened to be in your neck of the woods. So that's, that's, that's a pretty big part of it. And I'd also suggest that we have done some initial outreach to landowners in the area. And there is some, you know, there is some interest in working with us. And so, you know, before we get too far down the road of, of, you know, you know, setting false expectations with the landowner and/or, you know, oftentimes, this can be a pretty good financial event for, for anybody willing to work with us. We just want to make sure we're not wading into a, you know, a pool of, or I guess, I don't, I don't know what the analogy is, walking into a hornet's nest, I guess, just, just making sure that, you know, there is interest in a path forward here with you all.
Thank you.
Does that help? I can, I can get technical, and I don't mean to do that. And so I hope that was, that was reasonable.
So the battery storage is not going to be recharged with solar, it sounds like it's going to be, and it just so happens that on slide number, I'm, you know, I'm not electrical engineer by any stretch.
Oh, God, I'm, I'm, I'm an attorney, so, you know, I.
We got two attorneys.
Well, no, not practicing, I should say, I never practiced.
That's okay.
All I do is breakfast.
But again, on slide number six, it shows that the, usually you're coming into, it looks like you're using the ISO, something like ISO New England's power lines. Is that what happens is it's charged from the, and, and the, as you said, the three lines on the road are like 13,000. These lines are really high voltage, the real.
Correct. Yeah, so, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
So those are the ones that are going to charge this battery, not the 13K lines, but the, the really high voltage ones.
That's correct. Yeah, we will become what's called a market participant. And so it doesn't, it doesn't have an impact on the local grid in that manner. We are dealing with like the higher voltage power lines out there, and that's, you're correct. It will be, you know, it will be charged by the grid. And then, I'm sorry, the wholesale grid, and we'll have to, you know, qualify with P, I keep saying PJM, I'm sorry, with ISO New England to do that, and we'll, we'll go through the whole qualification process. It takes, you know, about a year to do, actually, it's quite, quite onerous. And ultimately, we will, generally speaking, the way it works is, is we will take power from the grid that is, you know, excess at night, when people aren't using it, they're sleeping, whatever, all their stuff's on. And then we'll save it during the day and discharge it. The good example is, is when everybody gets home in the summertime, flips on the AC, you know, there's a spike in electrical need. And that's typically when we're going to discharge that energy. And what that does is, is it allows the grid to take advantage of cheaper electricity at night and then discharge it during the time of day when otherwise you have to pay for other really expensive resources to come online and meet those, those load needs. And so it kind of takes a, you know, an electrical load, if you will, like electrical need, starts low in the morning, kind of peaks throughout the day, and then goes at night and kind of smooths that out a little bit more. Again, so that there is, you know, there are going to be opportunities during some times of the day, to be honest, in the summer, when, you know, let's say, there is a bunch of sun and there's, there's an abundance of solar energy that's being generated in a given area, it's entirely possible that that could be, you know, taken off the grid, stored at the battery at that time, and then discharged later on in the evening. So it, it's, it really depends.
Um. So we know that ISO New England has a area that they already have set aside right under, or right by those power lines, a little further up. And I'm saying this proposed location, because we're not, we're not talking areas yet or locations. So I'm wondering why you didn't approach that way.
Um. I, I honestly, I'm a little, I'm, I'm not aware of the ISO New England proposed area. I'm not aware of that program, I must be honest. You stopped me a little bit. That might be one I have to come back and do a little research on, if that's okay.
Through your curveball, yeah, up the, there's a, I think, a transfer station up the, up the line to, I'm gonna say to the.
Oh, the substation up there?
Yeah.
Yes, um. So, yes, that, that is, that is a part of our discussion, I would say. And that's kind of, that is part of where I believe there will be discussions with the utility and the RTO about how, how we would effectively enter that substation. It's, it's, without getting too deep into it, you know, we would have to figure out if we could use the corridor of that power line to get up there, or if we would have to kind of find an easement to get up there. So there's, it's kind of a land, land thing that we're working through at the moment.
All right. Like I said, it's a question that.
No, yeah, yeah.
This, what it sounds like is, and I'm looking at Tom, because this is just like, we're all gonna pump water up to the top of the mountain.
Yeah.
And then during the day, we're gonna run it through the turbines.
Yeah.
Yeah, same, same philosophy. Can't keep running.
Yeah.
So Jason Barroso, I know you can't see me.
I think I can, just a little bit, ever so slightly on the right there. Yeah, hey, how you doing?
So if I understand this correctly, these, these sort of facilities would be a backup to the transmission lines. They would get charged off the transmission lines and then feed out into the transmission lines upon areas of high demand, right? So not at all connected to the distribution, what people normally see on the road.
My. Just, just to be clear on that, you know, I want to, I, the, the substation that we have that we are targeting, I do not believe has any distribution lines coming out of it, because it's a high voltage sub. I can triple-check that, but, and we wouldn't be connecting to that. There's a whole bunch of equipment that is in between and differentiating those, those parts of the grid. But no, it's not as though there is going to be a, you know, a 13, five feeder going into our, our system, right? Like, that's not how it works. But I, I always like to just like, I don't, I don't like to speak in absolutes, because it's electricity and it kind of goes where it goes, you know?
And you said you weren't practicing attorney. So, just a joke, but.
Hey, I'll, I'll take it, I'll take it.
So I had a question on what type of batteries are usually used? And have there been any, does Strata Energy have any sort of data related to any off-gassing that might come off of these?
Yeah, so that's where, generally speaking, you know, what I can speak to at my knowledge base is that we, you know, the industry is really heavily moving towards lithium ion batteries at this point. And so to your point about the off-gassing, we have so much data and some, so much in-house expertise that we can really speak to about that. And that's something that I will take up as a follow-up. And if, if he's available, a gentleman named Joel Veduna, he's our VP of Storage at our company. And he is a wealth of knowledge on these exact types of topics. And as, as my, you know, as, again, it's kind of, the, the way I was thinking about this is we could just do a little introduction. And the idea would be is try to get Joel out there, and if you can give us, you know, kind of a list of follow-up questions, like we can, we can, he'll put on a, he'll put on a, you know, a formal dissertation class for you guys. He's, he's very, very knowledgeable on this stuff.
I just wanted to kind of let you know that that's where my line of thinking was gonna.
Sure. Yeah, sure.
This would obviously, the question would be different from site to site. So I think we wait until there's a site proposed or something in some sort of application.
And I think, and I think that there will, we'll have more clarity in the next month, I think, along that, along that vein. And so, sorry, I think my kids just got home upstairs. I apologize if you can hear that. We'll have more information on that, hopefully to report back on with more specificity in the next month.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do these batteries have like, as compared to solar, again, that have like a shelf life, like a solar panel does?
Yeah, good question. So, yes, they have a degradation, they call it degradation, right? Generally speaking, you know, they talk about batteries more in a 20 to 25-year lifecycle. And part of that is driven by, you know, how much and how frequently and how quickly it's charged and discharged by the grid. And so it, there is a, there is a wiggle room there as it relates to kind of the, the long-term operation of them. Not unlike solar, solar is just kind of more predictable, it kind of just like the panels degrade over time, they go down. These, it really is driven by how the, the, the unit and how often and quickly the unit is dispatched by the, by the needs of the grid. So, you know, that's kind of the, the reasoning and logic behind that there.
Good, sure. John Flynn, Boris Luckman. I was involved in a project for putting solar up at our town landfill. At that point, you know, this is only years ago, there was a moratorium from the grid on interconnect. Would this be the same problem, are you gonna be doing upgrade for that type of thing? Or it would seem like if you're feeding back onto the lines, you're not really, you are analogous to a solar field per se. And you need to upgrade the switching equipment, because as they told us, it was really built one way back in the, back in the day.
Yeah, it's a good question. And I, if I, if I remember, Tom, correct me, I think this was, was this an Amaresco project on, yeah, on a landfill, right? So generally, I believe that that is at the distribution level for that project, I believe. And what I am aware of, just through understanding of, I've been doing this a while, and, and there was a time when I did do community solar development. Because of the amount of, of projects that Massachusetts has spawned over the past, I mean, geez, it's been like almost a decade at this point of, of, you know, distributed generation. They started like, next, I'm sorry, National Grid and Eversource started running into real problems on the distribution network, capacity issues that were, that were occurring at that level. And so it doesn't surprise me, I hadn't heard that there was a moratorium. But it's not something that, that we are aware of at the ISO New England and/or kind of location that we're at at the higher voltage. You're correct in that the way the, the ISO and the, ISO New England and Eversource and National Grid will study this project is as if it is injecting, you know, whatever capacity of megawatts the project is, call it 75. And what we will have to do is, even if we never hit that 75, the fact that we could, from an operational perspective, we still have to pay for all of the upgrades to accommodate that. And that's part of why we do that, what's called an injection analysis. And what that really means is, is that we look at kind of the, the substation or a line and basically say, okay, if we plug in, call it whatever, 75 megawatts, is it gonna basically melt the line and make us have to pay to what, what they call reconductor, that line? And that basically means replace the line with a higher capacity rating to accommodate the, the, the additional potential injection of the system, so that like line sag doesn't occur, because the line gets so hot, and then it causes all sorts of problems and safety issues, right? So getting back to your question, we basically have to pay for the upgrades that were allocated based on the size, the size of the system. But, but I'm honestly not aware of a, of a moratorium at the, at the wholesale kind of voltage level that we're working at. Um, at the, at the wholesale kind of voltage level that we're working at.
This was part of the smart two program. They would, like you said, it was oversubscribed really at the beginning.
Yeah, yeah.
Back to when you talked about the substation off of Allen. My understanding when that was created here at that time, that was more of the redundancy plan. Between, I thought, the grid and Northeast Utilities, because that's where the lines crossed. And they were looking for a power connection point, and they've got several along the way. That was the primary purpose for that location. And you're saying there's additional land there which could potentially. Allow you to do storage at the same locations.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not tracking the question. I'm sorry, sir. I apologize.
I missed the part where John said he thought where you were, you know, looking for locations.
Yeah, so we, we looked at two forty Slum Road, that's where the substation is. We haven't settled on that location yet, probably because of, I think, environmental concerns.
Um, but my point was the primary purpose when that was built was that was a, uh, a sharing agreement between the grid. And Northeast Utilities or whatever its name now, because that's what South and the East West Lines cross. And they were looking for the type of, if one failed, they could backfeed the other.
Got it.
Primary purpose for that installation. And if you're saying, well, great, but there's an extra five acres there.
Right.
Which we could also use for storage.
That's the, that's the idea.
Right, but you're right, there are definitely environmental concerns at that.
You're right, right, that's how we're looking at that and, and others.
That's, yeah, I think, I, I mean, I think that's right, there. That location has a couple of aspects as it relates to the wholesale grid that, that are attractive, right, relative to the program. Um, yeah, I, I mean, I guess I would agree with your, with your comment.
Wait, I mean, look at the fact you're right next to two major trunks. Why not, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess, so part of, part of this besides, you know, hopefully educating, because this, this is different, right? It's, it's not, uh, battery storage that's. On the same site as a solar field, which, you know, most of us have seen before. This is standalone battery energy storage. Um, and so part of the discussion when I reached out to the building commissioner on behalf of Strata and said, oh, well, how do we do this? Is it the solar bylaw? Is it the utility piece or is it something else? Uh, he and his wisdom said, talk to the planning board.
Um, of course.
Right, right. So that's, that's why we're here, because I think you're hearing the benefits of it. And we can certainly provide you the technical specifications so that you know that it's safe. And I think to answer your question. You know, Strata does a lot of work in other places, and I think he's just anticipating the questions that come with, well. What about fire? What about if something melts? How are these cooled? And so, you know, somewhat generally conclusorily and anticipatorily has said. We can mitigate the risks. And so without saying, oh my gosh, here are all the risks, I think that's why he's, that's what Derek said, what he said. But part of what we'd like to use this for is to find out, is there a permitting path? You know, are we talking about under solar? Are we talking about under utility? Or are we talking about going to town meeting and having a totally separate use category for some things like this?
So my, my feeling, not hearing everything, but the, the question about the solar. Good question. I'm not sure it really fits the, um. The initial. Parameters issued of, you know, by the state.
Yeah.
You know, set up by the state. Um, because. It doesn't really use any solar, but.
Exclusively. It'll, it'll use energy created by solar facilities, but we can't say it will only use energy.
Well, and I'm, uh, I'm saying it won't use to charge these batteries.
Yeah.
We're coming off of the, the high, real high, not the thirteen five K, or, you know, what I'm saying, the transmission lines. So it's gonna charge that line and then backfeed when. Okay, so. Does it fit? Doesn't really, I don't believe it fits. I'd have to do a little bit more research, okay? Um, where else does it fit? Man, I'm not sure. Um, you know, we, you mentioned, I'm sorry. Mentioned the clean energy standard.
Yeah.
For Massachusetts, doesn't fit there. It could, it could. So there's a possibility there. So, um, I think what this board needs to do is really research and look. And see how, and again, I'm not, I don't want to say the, you know, square peg in the round hole. But I think we need to find out how it best fits.
Cost where this is. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, you know, and I looked, as I did the analysis, I, I came up to public utilities and essential services. You know, which is, is that, and that's administrative site plan review, you know, is that something that you would? Approve or solar, understanding that, and I, you know, we're starting to deal with this, just as practitioners in the permitting context. More and more, right? So battery, standalone battery energy storage is coming. Um, that's really, I think, the next wave of what you're gonna see because of, you know, Derek's mention, as I mentioned to you in the hallway. You know, what happens when there is that spike during the summer when everybody turns on their, uh, air conditioner, what'll happen is that ISO New England will. Have to buy that electricity from somewhere in, let's say, West Virginia, where it's an outdated coal-fired plant, who knows they're in violation, who could just flip the switch. Take so much money that they can pay their fine and still make a ton of money, right? So that's where that clean energy incentive piece comes in. So like. I think there's enough incentive here in the Commonwealth. Also, the only way that we're gonna hit our renewable energy goals is to allow some stabilization. Through these battery energy storage systems, because when it's sunny, electricity is produced. When it's not sunny, then it's not produced. And so you have to find a way to store it. So, this is just really a long-winded way, um, of saying, this is coming. And so there's not many municipalities that have this. Uh, when I look at your definition of solar. Uh, solar energy system, it talks about, um. The storage, you know, granted, it might be in the context of pertinent storage. It doesn't say, you know, so we're dealing with this in Hadley. And Hadley says something about converting light to electricity. And so they have that piece in their bylaw in their definition. And town council back came there and said, no, standalone battery, uh, battery energy storage does not fit into what, what our. Characterization or characterization. And so it's really just before Strata spends a lot of money and going through all the designs and getting an LLI. And spending their time here rather than other places.
Right.
We just wanna know what the path is and if it is solar, if it is utility, or if it is, hey, let's talk about an energy solar, uh, storage system. Standalone use category and everything that comes along with it. And then frankly, what I do is I say to Derek, okay. Town meeting, maybe you can get on the spring town meeting, maybe you're talking about October for something like this. If it's October, how does that fit into your timeline? And does that just bust the whole thing? Hey, right? So that's, it's just part of like the predictability to understand.
Um, I'm gonna offer one other thing if, if I can. Um, I know we haven't picked a site, there's no address or anything, but the previous, what we saw, the two forty East Line that rode. Um, that area, uh, I know for a fact. There was an issue when the house was cited with, uh, conservation DEP and, um. And, uh, natural heritage, okay, just, um, so you understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's, that'll be, that's one of the first things that we're, we're looking at as far as citing goes.
Yes.
Conversation.
Yup.
We know what natural heritage, we know what.
You know naturally, you're here.
I'm here. I mean, I miss Deanne over there, and not even for, I mean, for your project most recently, and then I've got one in. Amherst for Hickory Ridge, that has wood turtles all over as well. And so, I mean, the plans and the protection.
Right, and I know you're, and you know, speaking with you on the side, I know you're familiar with this.
Yeah, we know it. And so that's why, you know, we'll have that as part of the conversation if, and if it comes to a place, you know, so you're not, part of this might be, so you're not spinning your wheels. If, if we can't find a suitable location, but it might be good for you to think. Are there others that may come in as more solar comes online in Massachusetts? And this may be a desirable location that. Funny way of happening sometimes, but they may say Hamden is the perfect place, and then you don't have a bylaw and you made this out, because there's pilot payments and it's relatively. You know, for a hundred and mega, a hundred megawatts on two and a half acres, I mean, you have really small footprint, maybe up to five acres. And to get the pilot payments associated with that for something that's not burdening schools or the police, the blah, 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 I mean, it has so much benefit to it. So just. As a municipality, you may want to think about what, you know, should we get an energy storage system? Bylaw in place if it doesn't fit into one of these other categories.
Yup.
So.
And, and I, I thought I'd offered to, um, knowing that you're gonna laugh. I, I'm actually in Minneapolis, Minnesota, so I'm not even in Durham. Uh, I work remotely, so I'm even, I'm even, uh, I guess I'm more on the latitudinal plane. As you guys, especially when it comes to weather, um, gets too hot for that, down there for me in the summertime, I gotta admit. But what, what I've seen in a lot of other, um, 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 I guess counties, towns, whatever. In other markets where, you know, we've developed this and brought forward, and there's this circum- this circumstance, um, where it's not clearly defined. Uh, folks have considered it a public utility, uh, it, it, you know, just as it's, it's, I don't think, um, I, I heard that mentioned, and I think that. You know, as, as Tom was suggesting, the way that it supports the broader grid, um, while, you know. The, the developer in me wants to crack a really dumb joke and say like, hey, I'll put a panel on top of all this, so like, we can say it's charged by solar. Bad, bad developer joke. Um, you know, I think, I think there is an element of, uh, um, um, you know. To consider as you guys are thinking about this, you know, the, 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 the support that it's, it is providing is to ensure that. You know, you're smoothing out the grid, um, you're, you're, you're taking advantage of all the solar that is out there. Um, and, and there are times during the summertime when, you know, those projects are curtailed because there's too much power being injected into the grid. And that's part of why the state, you know, got this program going is, is a way of ensuring that you can continue to. Um, build solar projects out there and not have the grid, um, be overly burdened and, and cause significant cost upgrades to the ratepayers, right? So, two cents, um, and it was an opportunity to throw in a dumb developer joke, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think Christina's got her hand raised.
Oh, I think that's Christina. Christina?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. Um, just a question. Do the consumers in the area see any benefit from this technology? Um, meaning that, meaning the people who, you know, pay their electrical bills and things like that.
Yeah, so, so, um, this is always, this is always, uh, uh, it's a, it's a. Uh, when you talk on the wholesale level, um, directly speaking, no, it's, uh, I, I can't lie and say, you know, you're gonna get a. Two cent per kilowatt hour discount, because we don't even operate at, um, the distribution level. So, you know, what, what it is and, and how we actually can have positive, um, cost impacts. Um, as, as these, uh, projects roll out, is again, kind of going back to the, the avoided, um, network upgrades. Uh, as it relates to the broader transmission grid, because we're able to balance, um, you know, the, 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 the flow of electrons. Um, throughout the, the ISO New England area to avoid, you know, as, as Tom mentioned, the, the summer peak. Where you gotta import from a coal plant in New York or something like that, and the, the cost of that goes through the roof. So incrementally, um, the more of this that comes on the grid, the more benefits that will be returned to ratepayers, um, at their, uh. Um, you know, at their, uh, at their, at their bill at home. And frankly, again, kind of going, uh, going back to the concept of, of. Further renewable penetration, um, you know, th- there's plenty of studies out there that talk about that, um, renewables, in particular, solar is, is frankly. On a levelized basis, the cheapest cost of electricity that there is out there. So if you get more solar going in the market. Um, and are able to, to capture more of the, the benefits of that low-cost resource and, and, and smooth that out over time. It will, you know, have a positive impact on, um, um, ratepayers' bills, but, you know. I can't, I can't sit here and say that, yeah, tomorrow you're gonna get five dollars saved on your monthly bill. That's just, that wouldn't be a fair statement if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
No problem.
I think on that note, um, if you're looking for something that would help. It would actually, uh, immediate. The monies that are gained either through taxes because of this, or however the select board negotiates something. Um, you'd see that in your taxes at the town, town level. Um, more. But the other end of that is, um, because of. And, and, and this is my little political thing, because of the more demand for electricity. In other words. You know, whether we go to electric vehicles, um, people working from home with computers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, there's gonna be more demand for electricity and there will be a, the high and the low with the spike that you see. Where, um, the air conditioning is, when you used to turn it on. Um, when you got home, if you're working from home, now you're running that air conditioner all day and possibly all night. So the demand for electricity is not gonna get any less. If anything, it's gonna get more.
And, yeah, uh, just, I got a quick question. I don't know if you guys are aware of any other storage facility, um. Electrical storage.
Standalone?
Yeah, standalone, uh, locations in the area that we could.
In the area, no, I don't.
In the state?
Uh, I know that in the eastern part of the state, um, a group was working through the electric facility citing board. Because of the size of that battery energy storage project, but I can get you some specific examples of, like I said, this is really new.
Yeah.
And I, and to that point, yeah, it's, it's, it's well put there at the end, Tom. This is new, and there's a couple of projects that are, you know. Front loaning, um, I guess, first movers, if you will, whatever you wanna call it, um. But, you know, if it would be helpful, I could talk to, um, you know, talk to my team and pull together. A little bit more of a, of a case study, if you will, of, of what, you know, what are, what that installation, I kind of, we showed you on, on like slide four. Um, looks like, I'm sure we've got a ton of photographs that we could, um, you know, uh, uh, share to give you kind of a sense of scope. And what the different components are. I could, I'd be happy to, you know, pull something like that together if that would be a, a useful.
Like, or coming from how other communities are, are.
Oh, okay, okay, fair enough, yeah, fair enough.
That's it. I, I've been writing opinions lately just for, I mean, these folks, Blue Wave, when we go to the project, I mean, they're looking to get into the. Storage game as well and just, it's really just these conversations that we're having with towns, and most of them are saying, yeah, it's more, there's, you're saying it's similar to solar. I don't know if there's gonna be some lawsuit that comes out and then ultimately it gets, you know, ultimately determined, but yeah, there's, there's not a lot, I know.
Any regulation yet?
No, I mean, as far as specific energy storage, no, I know, uh, Charlton, so the town of Charlton has an energy storage system regulation. I think that's for like. When, more than just what we're talking about here, like it wasn't precipitated by solar individually. Um, you know, I looked up some, there's some like model bylaws out of New York. I know that I saw that town of Medway, I wanna say, put out an RFP for a, a battery energy solar consultant to work with them. Um, so I don't know if that was precipitated by just a bunch of people coming in and saying, let's put a moratorium on because of all this stuff, so.
Yes.
You know, this is, I don't know if this is a canary in the coal mine for you, because I just don't know what sort of capacity Hamden has, you know, given the power infrastructure that you have. Like, town of Charlton has a bunch of solar arrays, town of Palmer has a bunch of solar arrays because of, I think, distribution lines there. And the grid is, who is just favorable. Um, I just don't know if Hamden, uh, Derek offline, I don't know if Hamden has that, and so you should be paying attention to. You know, you're one of the next dominoes to fall. But there is, like I said, this is just really new and towns are just addressing it as you're doing. Any other questions? Okay, alright, so, uh, we'll let you think, we'll try to provide you some information to maybe persuade you one way or another.
Yes.
Of what an essential services is, um, see if we appreciate it.
Okay.
Uh, but otherwise, if there's any other information going, you've got my email, send it along, I'll get it from Strata, we can provide you whatever you want, whether it's for this. Or some other, you know, just battery energy storage generally.
Chair, may I ask one question?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
Well, I didn't, I just thought of it now. Uh, for the folks who don't know me, I'm Ted Zebra, I'm co-chair of our Conservation Commission. And I won't bring that up because it's been mentioned multiple times. The question I have is more, uh, from a citizen standpoint. Uh, there's been some chatter last half dozen months, as these battery storage units have become, uh, big, starting to become happening. Um, what about, and I don't know the right word, because I'm not an engineer, uh, the harmonics, the noise from the. Batteries from the large air conditioners that are used to cool the storage units. Um, can you address that at all, please? Thank you.
Man, you're, uh, thank you, Ted. Um, you are getting, you know, I think you're getting into a space where, um. I wanna be cautious in what I say because it's not my area of expertise, but what I have heard. Uh, sound is, sound is, sound is always kind of a tricky one, right? Um, what I've heard is, is that these are similar to kind of, you know, your, your standard home, um, HVAC units. Uh, they are enclosed, um, they are enclosed, you know, units that have venting from them, so it's not as. Um, it's not as wide open, if you will, as a, as a residential unit. But that's generally how I've been told is, is to. But that's generally how I've been told is, is to consider them, is that, you know, it's, it's, it's similar to a, to, to an HVAC unit. If that helps, but, um, you know, generally speak, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So if we get into permitting, I'm sure we can get technical specifications, decibel readings, distance. You know, what the amplification is, if you have ten of them together versus twenty of them together.
Once we get further down the line, I think we may have some of those questions, you, you, you know.
Screaming noise.
Yes, we will.
Yeah.
Hate whatever, you know.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I think, I'm trying to, generally speaking, what I've, what I've heard is, um, to, to try to put some numbers on them, right, and it all depends on the setbacks, but, you know, it, it's, um, it's kind of similar to the, the, the sound you hear from a commercial building about, you know, a hundred mi- a hun- hundred miles, I'm sorry, a hundred feet away. And it's, you know, generally around sixty decibels at the property line. Um, you know, and if you look at kind of where we're, we're looking here in, 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 in this particular area, it's going to be sign, not only is it, uh, very well treed in certain aspects, right? So I think there'll be some, some buffering that happens there. Um, but we, we generally try to cite these things in, in Tom's, right, when we go into the permitting, there will be sound studies. There's ways, because the footprint is so small, um, to, to, to really try to, again, minimize not only the, the visual, but the sound impacts as well. But I, sorry to speak in such loose terms, I just don't want to say one thing and have, come back next month and have you be like, well, Derek said this. So I, I just, you know.
Trust me, right now, um, it's like, it's just, that's right, this is kind of exploratory for everybody.
I appreciate you guys, uh, uh, being, understanding in that regard.
Okay. Good.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you guys so much. Look forward to seeing you, meet you all in person very soon. Thank you so much for the time.
Yeah, thank you.
Take care.
Counselor will be talking.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. A little on their schedule. Okay, um, Old Coach Road, A and R.
Good evening. My name is John Mason. I'm here from our life associate, I'm the, of our client, Mr. Manzel, who is, uh, brings us the company this evening. Um, I assume you've all seen the plan.
I, I'm looking at it now and I just, these are probably, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly a straightforward plan. Our client purchased, uh, do you want, uh, uh, number nineteen, Old Coach Rowan, uh, within the last year, is that right?
No, no, no. So fifteen purchased a property that used to be my mother-in-law's property. Yeah. Passed away and sold the property. Prior to that, she established a legacy that, my, my wife and siblings. Their nineties, when we ended up selling the property, we wanted, we didn't know where the, the pins were. We had, um, did that come out and draw the pins and lonely, they, my lawn, with my irrigation, part of my lawn, encroached on the property. Had that, had my mother-in-law let us do this, that.
Yeah.
Prior, we would have had it all taken care of when we owned the property, when I was in common. So, we'll find with, you know, sectioning off this piece of the property here that they have and, you know, it should be pretty straightforward.
And, and just as a further point, uh, prior to, uh, this plan being done at, at the time of the, the closing, there was, there was an easement granted, uh, you know, prior to this, uh, plan being prepared.
Prior to closing and the easement done.
This is just basically, it would be, you know, owning it in fee rather than having, uh, you know, a, a easement, if you will, for just the property that's currently being occupied. And it's, you know, a lot area, I believe there's sprinkler, uh, system as well. That's, again, a large part of the impetus for, uh, you know, creating a small parcel A to be, uh, you know, needed to be, uh, larger property to be.
Um, yeah, I think of the easement was, if, correct me if I'm wrong, the driveway maybe?
That was prior, yes, that was an old.
Yes, and I, I think I was on the board when it came.
That was up at the old Surrey Lane.
Yep.
Issues and all that.
Yes, yes. So, um, it looks like you'll be setting two pins, am I correct? Or?
Well, there's one, there's one of the, the one on the, the line there that, uh, we would be setting a total of, uh, yes, two pins.
Two pins, yeah, okay.
Along that one hundred eight foot course.
Yeah, the one oh eight, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
If I could actually, I apologize, I was shuffling papers, so I'm going to try and, so fifteen was sold off.
Fifteen.
So fifteen was sold to the cold baths, part of your lawn is actually on that property. So now the purpose of the A and R is for them to deed a piece of that property to you.
Correct, and that, and that piece there right now currently have the easement prior to closing.
Yes.
So we didn't want them to, to be honest, but they could have taken care of all this, delayed the closing, gone through all this.
Yep.
But we want to be good neighbors, so we wanted to go through closing, they agreed to do the easement, we said, well, we'll just take care of this.
Is there any reason for us to have a copy of this?
I don't believe so.
So that's, I guess, that, I'm just trying to think of.
So it's process. What I'm seeing is recorded here, you see this driveway easement is on the plan. Basically, this, the, the driveway easement has already been recorded down.
Plan book three seventy.
Okay, so this, this parcel A, so this, no, this parcel A easement is now being created right now.
Correct, it will be, it will be deedage from, uh, holdout to, uh, the larger parcel nine.
Yeah, the only thing that I'm, I'm trying to get to here is do, do we have an, we have an application from the cold baths? Is that this, go ahead, is that who's applying for it?
This, this is basically, they're the.
The cold baths signed it is.
The cold baths are the app, okay, that's what I'm trying to.
We're not doing it behind their back.
That's all I'm looking, figure out there, yeah, they've signed it, I'm, I'm fine with it. I have no issue. I just want to make sure this was, the application was coming from them, yes.
Just like I said, we want to be good neighbors, that's why we closed and the easement thing.
Any other questions?
John? You got a question?
You can ask it. I was just quick, I asked Kevin before, just on record. The lot that they're creating by taking the A and R away is still conforming and that's, that's really the only thing. And I think Kevin's point is great, he's cleaning it up, he's making it right.
Right.
Everybody's on plan, this is one of your, Heather, this is the best one, great learning process for you. This is the best A and R you're ever going to see in your life.
Very straightforward.
So what John asked was, is the remaining, the fifty thousand two seventy seven square feet? And the frontage still going to comply with zoning?
Right.
So we're not creating a non-conforming. Christina, any questions? You still with us?
Yeah, I'm still here. No, I think I'm good.
Okay, all right, um. Good motion.
Motion to sign the.
To approve?
Yeah. Approve, I, I move to, uh, sign the A and R. Uh, Wendy and Robert Fullbath at, uh, fifteen Old Coach Road.
Seconded, all in favor? Christina?
Aye.
Good enough.
The battery store.
All right. So let me.
Yeah, the Mylar you're going to take. What?
You're trusting everybody, guys.
Should I?
You, yeah, I, I can, you guys can, whatever. I, I, you can do it, buddy, okay. No problem. No problem. Okay.
How many copies you guys got? I only need three.
I, I need one of those, or I'll, let me take.
Yeah, I've got extra. So we're giving the Mylar to you and your family and other towns with the cold baths. Yeah, do you want the other?
Heather. Shoot those. Add a sketch.
Do you? You dropped off without the other end? Ah, okay, well, here we go.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I got three.
Thank you. Okay, what's the last thing?
Okay, is one sixty Glen Dale, I'm sorry, how you doing today? Sorry for the delay.
No, it's no problem at all.
You got a little, you got a little, uh, little education, yes.
So I, I used to do utilities, go so with the women, so I thought that building outside.
Oh, okay, yeah. Um. Listen. You're okay?
Yeah.
Right, and last thing is, uh, you, okay.
Great, well, thank you, so my name is Hugh Scott, um, with my family in town at one sixty Glen Dale Road, so that's lot eighteen. On the plan I passed out, um, we also own lot thirty one. So we share a common property line off the back of our lot, the Hilltop Bennett. Um, we've owned it for years now and one thing I want to start to explore is the ability to develop it. So what I'm trying to get an understanding of tonight is we'd like to determine if we can utilize a shared driveway. That might not be a proper term, but the ability basically to access lot thirty one from our curb cut on Glen Dale Road. So we own eighteen, we own thirty one. To, my understanding, so I'm a licensed civil engineer in New Hampshire, my understanding is that to get access off Bennett Road, we have to build a significant bridge, so probably a three-sided box culver would be the most economical way to do it. We might do that in the future, but we don't want to do it now. So we'd like to know if we can get, be, before I pay for boundary surveys of both lots.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that we can utilize a shared driveway concept and that's, that's kind of where I am.
Yep, so what you're asking is what we refer to as a common driveway. Okay, so I'm going to have the board look and see. If you don't mind, we're going to do a little training here also, because I do have some new board members, if that's okay. Section, I'm sorry, it'd be in section seven.
I think it's page sixty eight, I think. Page sixty eight.
So you've obviously looked at it.
I've got some help.
That works, so. Well, even actually, so we know, and I'm going to, we know, uh, second. Lot eighteen is conforming and lot thirty one is really conforming too, because if I look at, um, if I look at lot thirty one, he's got seven hundred and sixty feet of frontage. Um, how it works is usually you're doing a, uh, because it's on a curve, it's seven sixty, but it's supposed to be a, a straight line. Okay, so he, he has more than enough of the two hundred feet of frontage required. So we know that, so he's got two conforming lots, so I'm going to. So if I get to, I think it's page seventy two, just so you're not. And, and it, it falls under seven point five four. Is that your group down there?
Yeah.
I think.
Oh, they're acting?
Yeah.
That's good.
He doesn't know his lines.
I'm all, no, I'm, I'm, I'm only kidding. I just thought somebody was coming in here. All right. So what, what zoning district is this?
This is good six, you are correct.
Okay. And bear with us. So I get a question, both of us, to chairman, under definitions.
Yeah.
Common driveway.
Yeah.
Is only built in accordance with the standards where allowed by special permit.
Right, so if you go to, if, if you keep going, you're, you're absolutely right. It has to be a special permit.
So I have to go to special permit for?
No, 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 not yet. Okay, I don't want. I don't, so we're going to call.
Our six, so minimum lots two hundred.
We know they are both conforming. And we're not doing a special permit right now, he's just asking if he can do it.
So where are you looking right now?
I'm looking, if you go down through, because he's, he has a regular driveway.
Right.
On.
And where is the regular driveway on here?
On page, it's, through his Scott property eighteen.
Yeah.
It enters, um, from Glen Dale Road, okay, on the two hundred and six point two five frontage. Feet of frontage.
So there's no picture of the driveway here?
No, no, this, no, no. We, well, yeah, because he has the legally, he's built, the house is legally built, legally conforming. So we know he has a legal driveway at this point, or hopefully so.
We're the, we're the third owner, is my understanding. Yeah, I, I put the house is built in eighty seven and we're the third owner.
And this is Glen Dale.
Directly from the fire department.
Yeah.
Where you say you're special. We may authorize a, uh, common driveway as a special permit on there. For waiving the setback requirements.
And we're, we don't need to right now, we don't have a plan in front of us.
Right, so we don't, I'm not thinking setback. Right, so we don't, I'm not thinking setback right now.
Pardon me?
We're not thinking setback.
No, because his engineered plan would have to show the setbacks. Yep.
Your property is across from Mike Marion or up over there.
He's not, oh, his other property?
Yeah, where it ends up, it's about there too.
It's a, yeah, you know, there's a red building, it's like it's a, it's a woodworker.
Yes. Yeah.
The Lees are like the, the east, I think, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
They used to live in Bennett right up there.
Oh, yeah.
Only reason I'm seeing we can issue. Common driveways if he doesn't have. Setbacks, right?
No, he's going to another piece of property. So he's gonna go from one piece of property to another piece of property, and you own both.
Yeah.
So the common driveway is set up. To allow access.
To adjoining lots.
To adjoining lots or, yes.
Across the side lot or the rear lot lines.
Yeah.
Right. So we, so we could, under special permit. Because he's. Accessing across the rear lot line of the other one.
Yes. Do you understand what Jason just said?
Yeah. They have to four adjoining lots.
Well, he doesn't have four.
No, right, only us two, right.
One, yeah, actually, one lot. He's only got one, he's got his own lot and an adjoining lot, yes. So there's some requirements. Okay. It is possible. Okay. You're gonna have to have special permit. With that, I'm going to say you're gonna have to have a plan. I don't know what your driveway width now is, okay, if it's a regular driveway, it's usually around 12 feet. Common driveway is 14 minimum. Okay.
Does it, does it mean if you pave, it could be, could it be stone?
It's so it can, but here's the, your, on your present driveway.
Yeah.
It has to be paved for the first 20 feet. Okay, and there's some other, like I say, if you want me to read it to you, it's basically, you have to. It's gotta be within, and I'm saying that it's legal now, 10%, I, I saw your kids getting off the bus the other day.
Okay, okay.
So. So you're, I think it was your wife that was meet greeting them down. Yep.
What time?
They're young kids, they're young kids. They're young kids, it looks like.
Yeah.
So, no, I don't know what bus anyways. Okay, so you drive by the house every day, it's got a four-car garage.
Yeah.
Anyways, we don't have to get into it. So anyways, and I'm gonna just say that the driveway at the intersection with the street. Must provide a leveling of area with a slope no greater than 1%. For the first 20 feet, being that you're a civil engineer, you, you know what I'm talking about, right? A slope of no more than 8% for the next 30 feet. And no more than 15% for the remainder. I, your, your driveway, from what I see, pretty much conforms to that, you're not. And there should be a 2% grade across the driveway for the first 20 feet to allow water to shed, but you're there, and it again. Any curves, you gotta be able to, it's all in here, okay? Page 72. Page 73. And. Very top two pieces on page 74.
Just, just for clarification, on 74.
Yeah.
Standards D do not apply to this, correct?
That is correct, cause that's for a Frosty.
Okay.
Yep, so the first two would, two and three.
Yeah, I just noticed the maximum length under that section.
Because it's not a Frosty, a Frosty is a flexible.
That's why you have up to four.
No, no. A Frosty, and we can get into it. But it's. There, no, it's actually in the back, it tells you what a Frosty is, okay? There's purds, P U R Ds, and then there's Frostys, which is flexible. Okay. Anyways, that's not pertaining to you. Any other questions?
Yep, so it sounds like moving forward with boundary surveys would make, I mean, that has to happen anyways, I believe.
You are correct.
And then. We get that done, we would then come in with a, an engineered plan, you know, you know, all the stuff that, I mean, I, I have a friend who uses.
Love that call.
And it sounds like they know how to properly present in town, that gentleman did a good job.
Yeah.
But you know, we're working there or someone else. We want to show where we want the driveway to go, you know, there, when, when I met the previous owner, I was out for a run, and he had, you know, there was a big timber bridge across the stream, and an excavator.
He was doing us perk test.
Yeah, you know, there's, there's still stakes in the ground, and he actually gave me the out of cat file as part of the closing process. I know it's not good anymore, but it gives me an idea of like where things most likely can work on that lot.
Yeah.
But we have to do all that again, right?
Now, from a building standpoint, if you're gonna build, okay, yeah, you'd have to. I'm, I'm sure, I don't know when it was done, but her test, you only got about two years on.
Yeah.
And blah, 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 so yeah, you'd have to do all that, I'm sure you're probably gonna have to go through Concom, if there's.
It's a fairly challenging lot.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of, yeah, it's, I've got this printout that I got from. But yeah, there's a lot of things on the lot, so you know, it is what it is.
Yeah, there's, I'm sure there's turtles and everything.
There's natural heritage.
Not anymore, I found all those.
So, recording in progress. And whatever.
Yeah.
But yes, so your question, a common driveway is possible, okay? It's in the bylaw, you're okay. Comply with it, you've set plans.
So should I get that approved first?
What would I do first?
Would definitely like, like step one is like, like physically get the driveway, like the driveway can go here.
I would.
My suggestion would be, get, yeah, get your surveyor to go out and see where he, where he would like to cite the common driveway, and then. Meet with Concom before you come back to us, because I'm seeing a lot of.
Right, so Concom.
A lot of hurdles.
Yeah.
Put it that way.
Concom may say to you, absolutely not, you're gonna put a driveway here, okay, they may want you to move it or whatever, so.
Okay.
That's why your best bet is to go to Concom first, once you get the, pass that hurdle, and then you can come with an engineered set of plans for us.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, when it makes sense, you know, we want to try to push the structure as close to the stream as we can, and obviously, construction workers are gonna want to push as far across the stream as they can, assuming.
Correct.
Hopefully, we'll meet somewhere in between, but like, but I also try to get that done too. So I can be like, this rectangle-ish is about where the house is.
You'd wanna, you, yeah, you'd get a building envelope and go to Concom, but I know you're gonna be, I mean, the town bylaw is 225 feet.
Yeah.
From any river, from any river, river, from any resource, I'm sorry. It's an additional 25 feet from any resource area, riverfront is 200 feet. So riverfronts identified as a resource area, so you're looking at 225 feet away from the bank.
Yeah.
The median, high water.
Yeah.
I'm not a consultant.
No.
Confirm that with.
You know, and that's why.
Somebody else.
Yeah, that's why you're gonna need, like you say, somebody from Lubec or whoever, that has some, some wetlands experience, okay, and.
Yeah, get, get their idea, and then you, I, I think you need to figure out where the building envelope is, and where the common driveway would go, and get that all. Cleared, I guess, through, through Concom before.
Yeah.
You came back for. A special permit on the common driveway.
Good.
Yes, if I can make a point, I was actually here when we wrote that bylaw, I was on the planning board then, and that, remember John was too full, or at the top of Burley Road with the whole thing for this.
Yes.
Yeah. You got, I think you really have a choice of balancing your two options. You talked before about the bridge off of Bennett.
Yeah.
But by the time we put in the 700-foot common driveway, and the one big thing about common driveways is good neighbors. You've got 500 feet of driveway crossing through one lot to get to the other lot, plus another, and then where are your power poles coming from? Up the driveway, and shoot, John, how many would that be?
I think they come actually from Bennett.
Yeah.
Were they, so they're already crossing the stream from Bennett. I just want to say, work with your engineers, you might find that by the time you get to the common driveway thing, maybe the bridge doesn't look that bad.
You, are you, your driveway on the left or right of this?
My driveway is closer to 18.1 than to 17.
I think that's probably the path of least resistance, but yeah, like, once you get to 740 feet of driveway and.
Neighbors.
Yeah. Shared plowing costs and.
Yeah, and I mean.
Shared liability and all that stuff, I don't know.
And what it is, is right now, you're, you're the owner, I, I think you had expressed that you may want to. Move back there in some time, maybe leave the house to the kids or whatever, you, you know, I, you may want to sell it, it doesn't, that, I can't foresee, I don't have a crystal ball in front of me. But any way about it is that there is a common driveway agreement that if anybody bought. Your present property or this other piece of property, they would have to be aware of that agreement, because it's gotta get filed. With the registry of deeds.
That's like an easement-ish type document, I'm assuming?
It, it, there's a maintenance agreement spelling it out, kind of, would it, would, what your responsibilities, what their responsibilities, or whatever, okay? So, yeah.
Okay.
You're gonna have some design costs either way.
Yeah, yeah, either way, yeah, and hate to say it, yes, it can get expensive, but that's okay.
Well, I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you for waiting, I appreciate your time. Yeah.
Thank you much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Yeah.
It's, okay. We got. Meeting. I know we got 18 minutes. We got a lot of meeting minutes, but it doesn't.
Okay, we read them all already, so.
Hopefully, but we may not, so. You did, okay. Um. Jason, did you?
Yeah.
You're good.
Okay.
So let me do. Let me see, the first one. If we're all set on, on the public hearing, case 2021B, to Summers Road, the December 1st, 2021. Meeting minutes? Yeah, December 1st, the, the public hearing. Any changes, questions?
First thing I noticed was, under applicant presentation, the second bullet, second item was to provide a pollution.
I'm doing, I'm sorry, should be December 1st.
For December 1st.
Yeah, public hearing.
Yep, got it, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. 21B, yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so applicant's presentation.
Yeah.
Second bullet.
Yep.
First sentence, the sentence isn't completed. The second item was to provide a pollution.
Period.
And I think you mean insurance policy or something like that.
Pollution liability. Or pollution policy.
Yeah, I see, okay.
What do you want to say, pollution policy? Liability policy?
The next sentence I said to provide a pollution policy.
Okay.
It's kind of redundant, I think.
So we will say a liability.
I was just saying, as a second item, they have confirmed with their insurance agent and are able to provide a policy, pollution policy in the amount of 1 million.
Yeah, right.
Combined, but get rid of the word "we". And towards the end of that first sentence, to be, they are.
So the first thing is, the first thing is. Strike the period. Pollution, liability, policy.
No, I would get rid of the whole first sentence.
You want to get rid?
I'm sorry. So, the second item. They have, they have confirmed with their insurance agent.
Right, yeah.
Able to provide a pollution policy in the amount of 1 million dollars.
Okay, so, and they. Yeah, so we're gonna strike the first sentence altogether.
Yes, I got it.
They have confirmed with their insurance agent, and they are able to provide a pollution policy in the amount of $1 million. If the board feels that this is appropriate, they can make it a condition of the special permit.
The "we's" and the "they's" are part of because it was recorded.
Yeah.
And the girl who helped type from that, just so you know.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm not taking all this.
So, all right.
Thank you, though. And then the next one I saw was on the next page, under audience questions, third one down, read avail. Read avail of Wood Drive requested the board to consider a condition of the permit parked vehicles are not allowed on the property. I wasn't quite sure what we were saying there. They couldn't store parked vehicles or have parked vehicles there. I'm sorry, say again. No parking spaces for vehicles, right?
Yeah. No, no.
No storage of them.
No storage of parked, so how would you, read avail, consider the condition of no storage of parked vehicles?
No, that, no, that's not what it is, because the next sentence says, John Matthews responded, we cannot decide this at this point.
Right.
I'm not sure what her question was. But no, what, what happened was, John said, we can't make it a condition until we deliberate. I see. And decide on the decisions, but it was about parked cars being stored. It was about cars as a storage. Yes.
Right.
Restoring parked cars.
So why don't we clean that up a little bit, then, right? So Reveal with the Drive requested the board to consider a condition.
Restricting the storage of vehicles.
Okay.
Restricting the storage of vehicles of the property.
That was all I thought, but that was the unit, I just didn't miss them. Well, that's okay, Miss.
So now, listen, so now, do you want to clarify my, my position again, saying that John Matthews responded that we cannot decide at this point?
They will discuss when they deliberate.
And, right, do you want that as all in one sentence?
Oh, it doesn't matter.
Okay, okay, all right, okay.
Point just made, yeah, that's how we gotta make the point. I don't care about grammar.
I make a motion that the board approve the minutes of the Hampden Planning Board Public Hearing Case 2021B to Summers Road for December 1st, 2021.
Second motion.
Paper.
Aye.
Yes, with the noted.
I'm not gonna put every single noted change in these motions, correct?
No, no, just with the noted changes.
I'm, I'm not gonna specify.
No, no.
We'll never get this done. Yeah. Yep, aye. So was it 4-0, we're not included?
It's five.
Okay.
Christina just voted, she's.
I didn't hear, sorry.
That's okay. Um. The next one is gonna be. Minutes of the Hampden Planning Board, December 1st, 2021.
That's what it's called here.
Okay.
I always thought it was Townhome.
Me too.
It's called Townhouse here.
Okay.
See the letter?
Yeah, no.
It's an old word for me.
And make the motion.
In all reality, this pertains to the public hearing, but it's actually a regular board meeting.
Correct, I closed this one.
So do we, what's that? Right, we closed the public hearing.
Yeah.
So do you wanna change that heading to minutes of the regular Handen Planning Board meeting or something to that effect?
Okay.
Do we need to, because this does pertain to, again, I don't want somebody to get confused and say that.
No, I can change them.
It doesn't matter, cuz just.
Just underneath where you had.
It says the board discussed the conditions, the included decision.
I know, that's, you've got it, Madison, that's.
Move that line up there. Or, or just put underneath the heading, close meeting.
This was the regular meeting.
No, no, so I'll, I'll, what I was gonna say was, on this, on these meeting minutes, you got public hearing.
Right.
Public hearing, just put regular meeting under the, under the title.
Here, you want me just to change regular?
No, just insert it underneath.
Underneath.
Same place you had.
December 1st.
Yeah, same place you had public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just put regular meeting. That's all. Move that we approve the minutes of the Handen Planning Board for the regular meeting on December 1st, 2021.
All in favor?
I, I, Christine.
Okay, hi. Okay. All right.
In these three minutes, though, pertaining to this, wait a minute, the next one, just FYI, I opened the regular board meeting and then we suspended it, and we went to the public hearing. And we adjourned it, and then we resumed the regular, just so you know how I did this.
So this one, you're talking this one here, when I say December 8th, 2021.
Yep.
Okay, so we have the A and R, that's the one she's talking about.
Yep.
With Dan O'Brien. So that's the one we're talking about right now. So we wanted to do this.
You want regular meeting on the top, yes.
Yeah.
There's a typo, it's 5-0. Yeah, it's 5-0, I just thought.
We got an extra. Meeting, you remember?
Smart. Yeah. I blocked out December meetings.
Remember at 6:00?
Any solars, any of those?
Yes, the, the December 8th, yeah, December 8th. The A and R for South Monson Road, thank you, Jason. You got that one? Okay.
It's the single page one.
It's a single. I just added these to that.
Oh, maybe I didn't fit that.
I put them in. Sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, the, the change that Jason or Madison or somebody said.
Me.
You said, okay, the typo down at the bottom. Um, so I'll entertain a motion that will include the revision to that 5-0.
I'd move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Handen Planning Board on December 8th, 2021, dealing with the A and R at South Monson Road. Change.
Don't rub it in enough.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Christina.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, let me see. Let's do a public hearing, case 2021C, 16 Summers Road, December 8th.
The first thing I saw was on the first page, last paragraph, next to last line, it says every unit is on camera and will be reviewed daily. I would just say tapes would be reviewed daily.
Okay. Yeah. So the recording or tape, recording.
Yeah, so what is the line, I crossed that out?
Every unit is on.
The word camera, dash, tapes, or period. Tapes or recording will be reviewed daily.
Recording. Will be viewed daily. So insert after and, recording.
Recordings.
Will be viewed daily. Okay. Any? Anything else? Okay.
I'd move that we approve the minutes for the Handen Planning Board, public hearing, case 2021C, 16 Summers Road, on December 8th, 2021.
With the noted change?
Yes, with the noted change, that's good, and Madison seconded.
Favor?
I.
Christina?
Hi.
All right, hang in there. Last one, Christina, and then you.
There's a whole bunch. We have all the Octobers, they took them home.
October 14th.
October 10th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see them in.
We should have started with the October one.
That's why. No, they took them off home, we didn't approve them last time. We said to review, review them.
Yeah. All right. Um. Look at. Uh, let's do the, the regular meeting. Which was in the folder, okay, which is in the folder. Regular meeting, December 8th.
Right.
I know it doesn't say regular meeting.
No, but it will.
But it will, yes, thank you. All, okay.
Make the motion that we approve the. Sorry.
Number 13. Said I made a motion to approve it and I seconded it.
Say that again. Oh, Jason, I'm sorry. Should get some pixly, I think, time.
And Madison.
I think I take somebody else's name on. Where was I? Move to approve the regular board meeting minutes, December 8th, 2021, with a revised change.
Somebody second?
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Christina.
No problem.
Listen. In, in a, I know you got all these. Do you wanna, do you wanna table them until the next meeting?
I mean, if anyone asks for them, I have.
Are these part of the public documents request?
They're.
I can imagine that they're not.
They're not.
They're not?
I don't believe they are.
Really?
I haven't asked for any.
The request, yeah.
They haven't.
But, well, these are summer.
They, they have recordings.
Right, that will probably be the.
Yeah, to be honest with you, really, these minutes should not be this detailed. Right, but John asked me to, you like in detail.
I, I wanted them detailed for these, to, listen.
I just don't know.
That's okay, my feeling is, is that I don't believe they are part of the records request, right now, you, you.
I don't recall asking any for any minutes yet.
Right, so I don't, I didn't see any yet, in any of them.
And we can give them unapproved.
You can give them unapproved, yes. So I'm saying, you know what, it's almost 8:30. Christina's.
Joanne's purple.
Joanne. Joanne's overheated.
Santa Claus.
So I, I, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, seconded.
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right, sorry, I, I thought it was gonna be, we don't, in the next, we'll meet again, 8:21, the next meeting's gonna be the 23rd of February. Correct? Am I right?
But yes.
You're.
No, keep it up. Tomorrow, I'm, in February, we're done.
We're all set.
They copy, I'm sorry.
They didn't. Yeah.
We just ended, I didn't get a chance to. Think I'm on the defense.
Do I have a formal vote?
Yeah, we did. Yeah, so we've recorded, we're, do you want us to?
Let me poll, remember?
Wanna vote to turn that off?